Good evening, everyone. Please rise. We have the pledge allegiance. We have a young student that's gonna lead us.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Corey. I'd like to introduce you to the group. This is Corey Fisher, who is a 5th grade student at Pemberton Elementary School. Great job, Corey. Would you introduce your guests, please?
My dad and my principal, Ms. Ireland.
Great. Great job. We have a little something for you. Great job, you did.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Mr. Butler needs to take a picture.
3.2. Is approval of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same. Thank you. 3.3. Moment of silence. Again, this month, we've lost another one of our family. Sheila Justice was a retired food service worker at Fruland Primary in Pinehurst. At this time, in your own way, we'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on our agendas, 3.4, Student Representatives of the Board. And today at the table, we have Representative Ron Osman from James M. Minute. What's going on at J and B?
There's a lot of good things going on at J and B. Thank you for having me again tonight. I'd like to, I have to start really by talking about rock and roll. That was just a blast. We had sold out for most of the nights. I think seven out of the eight, or excuse me, six out of the seven nights, we were sold out. And not only were we able to present to our community, but we also had elementary schoolers come from different schools around the county and also from Mardella to witness rock and roll, so that we are promoting the arts to the younger students of Waukesha County, so that one day, hopefully, they can be involved in singing and dancing and band. I do also have to say that I was fortunate enough to go to Annapolis and be a page for, at the Maryland General Assembly, along with one student from Mardella. And while I was there, I saw our Senator Jim Mathias, and he came to rock and roll. And he just wanted me to share that he thought it was amazing. Along with rock and roll, we have a lot of talented musicians who made All-State Choir. And we also had 19 students make All-Shore Band. And beyond music, we had a lot of community service events going on at Bennett. We were able to raise $1,000 for their American Heart Association through various activities and a pep rally. Additionally, our, its academic team placed first at Regionals recently, and Nico D'Amico placed fourth in the wrestling tournament. I'd just like to close with one more thing that's happening, going on at Bennett tomorrow. I know a lot of students have kind of spoken about walking out. There's some concerns about school safety, so the SGA has taken a lot of initiative to show that we have a lot in place to ensure that our schools are safe. And not only do we have policies in place to ensure our schools are safe, but we're taking measures to listen to our students and to make sure their voices are heard and that they're able to express their opinions. So actually, just this evening, a few hours ago, our principal, Ms. Amy Eskridge, had sent out an email and a phone call explaining what we plan to do tomorrow to ensure our students' voices are heard. And I'd just like to share her message as to what we will be doing at Bennett High. All right. Good evening, Clippers. Tomorrow, March 14th, James and Bennett High School will take time to remember those 14 students and three staff members lost in the Florida school shooting. During the day, our student government will take time to broadcast an informational video related to school violence numbers, the history of gun laws, look at what they can do to represent their opinion in any type of situation, and learn how to conduct, excuse me, contact government officials to share their opinions and beliefs on an issue. Students will also watch a brief ALICE video. ALICE would be a practice only followed during an active shooter situation. While we never hope this type of situation at our school, at our school or in our district, we want to ensure that our students are familiar with what to do should this type of situation actually occur. And Ms. Eskridge goes on to define what ALICE is, and she ends by saying, "At the end of the day, students will watch a Clippers Choose Love video." And she further encourages students to walk up, not out. So rather than walk out of classes, students should walk up to 14 students and three teachers per day, introduce themselves, and have something nice to say to continue to build a positive environment. And at Bennett, we're fortunate enough to, fortunate enough to have Clippers Choose Love, which is a sort of club organization that the entire school is involved in to make sure we are loving and caring and supportive to each other. And tomorrow is a key day for Clippers Choose Love to ensure we're having a positive and safe environment at Bennett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From Mardella High School, Keith Flag. How are you doing?
I'm well.
Good.
So at Mardella, we have a lot of great things happening. I'm happy to represent Mardella today. I want to begin by saying, we've chosen to commemorate the students and staff members that have lost their lives, not only in the Florida incident, but in all the other incidents. We are challenging students to do 17 kind acts tomorrow, and we'll have something else later in April that will, that will get everybody together and sort of force sort of unity and respect for each other. We'll talk about what brings us closer, and we'll do activities to sort of break the ice and make cooperation happen in the school. In sports, Mardella has had their winter sports banquet to congratulate all the athletes that have participated in the season. Their refreshments and a slideshow, followed by an award ceremony. The girls' basketball team won their regional game. Our unified strength and conditioning team won the first spot in the state's championship overall. Kayla Cook won her second Baysides South Player of the Year Award, and our top wrestler, Logan Trader, made states at the championships as well. We hope to have an even greater season in the spring. Our band has been working hard in our state festival performances, and we'll be playing them tomorrow. This includes a song that conveys "The Trail of Tears," and it really is descriptive in how it does it, too. Does it in a very nice way, and I love that piece. We're also doing a song that helps the listener visualize color throughout the entire song. 10 students from Mardella have made the All-Shore Band, and two have qualified for the All-State Band. We're hosting the Warriors Challenge this Friday, and I've encouraged many people to come out and participate in the events and games. The Warriors Challenge is an event where students, alumni, and staff can compete in activities to cheer on the teams. There is a variety of fun events, from relays to basketball games, where each high school's grade can compete to beat another grade. Mardella is also hosting a Bud Drive to support those in need of a donor. We've encouraged participation and recruited the donors already. I'm happy I've got to report what Mardella has done since last meeting, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. From Parkside High School, Colleen Simkins. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you guys doing? I am so glad to be here tonight. There's been so many great things happening, not only at Parkside, but with all of our schools in the county. And I'm so very thankful for our wonderful representatives and getting to work with them outside of these meetings. And it's been great that we've been able to really be unified together and to work together for the betterment of our schools. There's a lot of great things going on at Parkside. So our Special Olympics basketball team won gold in the Regionals competition. We're really proud of them. And also, our Special Olympics strength and unified strength and conditioning team also placed first in states. We have our robotics team going to Nationals, and we're very proud of them and all that they do. Our DI team also placed first in Regionals, so now they are going to states. We are also very fortunate to have Mayor Jake Day. He was invited by our Young Americans Club, and he came in and he spoke with our 10th grade government classes. And it was a great opportunity for our students to be able to have communication with him and to be able to speak with him and get his insight. And it was really nice seeing that they were able to take action and see where they can go if they have questions or concerns. And it was really a wonderful experience, and we're very thankful for him and all that he does. We also had our athletes as readers and leaders visit Norris Salisbury. We do this every year, and it's always very successful. It's great to see all of our athletes go out and show our students that not only can they be stars on the field, but also in the classroom. And we just have wonderful students, and it's incredible to see them being able to succeed in all aspects. We also had our crisis team at Parkside. They got together, and they decided to update some safety measures in the school. There's communication with staff and students, and we've seen some really positive, some positive impacts going on, and we're very thankful for our teachers and our staff members who are very concerned and that are on the student's side and are always thinking of us. We now have this Trust Teachers Campaign where students will be able to submit a form saying to teachers that they really do trust, and that they would go to if they had any concerns or if they needed someone to be there for them. And not only is it a chance for our teachers to realize the impact that they're having on our students and to see who is trusting them and who really is focusing on them and is, you know, looking to them for help and support, but it's also a time for our students to know that our staff is there, too. Not just administration, that each individual teacher cares about them, and that they will be there for them if anything arises or if they just need someone to talk to. And we're very thankful for our teachers and our staff at Parkside that have always been a support system to us. With the National Walkout Day being tomorrow, I am very thankful for the members of the board who met with us to prepare us way before, I think, even we knew anything about it. It's great to know that our board is so aware of our schools and really cares about us. And it was great to meet with them and to discuss beforehand that we were able to really be unified and work together and to kind of help each other along the way. So Parkside has been preparing and preparing for tomorrow. We have some things in plan to help our students to stand up, not walk out. And we're trying to have this campaign of, "What's Your 17?", whether that's 17 nice comments you could make to someone that you don't usually talk to, or 17 people that you don't usually talk to, going up to them and just saying hi, letting them know that you are aware, or 17 minutes that you can just spend focusing on another person and not yourself. We really want our students to understand how much they matter to us throughout our school, throughout our county, just as individuals that we care for them. We are trying to focus on our new initiative, which is, "See Something, Save Someone." And it's really focusing our students on going to the right person, going to the right source. I'm very thankful for Rowan. She got together this great document where she was able to put all of the contacts that we can use if we have any concerns and take it to the right source. And we are very thankful for her and for all of her input that she did, that we were able to share that with our students and help lead them in the right direction. And we're so very thankful for the board that was aware and that acted beforehand, and we're so very thankful for that and thankful for this preparation that we've been able to have beforehand. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And from Y High, Nicholas Nguyen. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you guys? So good evening, everyone, yet again. I am honored to represent Waukesha High School today. Spring sports started March 1st, 2018. Prior to the tryout date, Y High athletes showed their excitement and enthusiasm on social media. On the topic of sports, Waukesha High School's Boys Varsity Basketball Team had a great season but lost their winning streak against North Carolina in the playoffs. However, their achievement of winning all games but one is outstanding and something that we are proud of. On March 27th, we will have a joint Honor Society induction, where National Honor Society, Muafitheta, which is the math honor society, Science National Honor Society, and French National Honor Society will hold their inductions together. There, Dr. Griffin, the dean of the Graduate College at SU, will speak in order to, in order to give light to leadership and what it means to be in these prestigious societies. We wanted to hold a ceremony where everyone's achievement of being inducted into these spectacular organizations in a spectacular way. The JRTC program at Waukesha High School received full accreditation when inspected by Cadet Command from Fort Bragg in North Carolina. Waukesha High School will host the band festival tomorrow and orchestra festival on the 20th. There, bands and orchestras are able to form pieces in front of judges in order to gain constructive feedback. On March 7th, the SAT was successfully administered. Juniors are grateful for the opportunity to take the SAT for free because it allows them to prepare for the college application process in the ensuing months. In order to increase school spirit and the value at Y High, Ms. Choi and her students created a new mural in our media center where it depicts the knowledge that's accessible through the resources at Y High. From books to the planets, the mural is worth checking out if any of you guys stop by Waukesha High School in the media center. In light of the Parkland incident and on the topic of the National Walkout tomorrow, we held a meeting today after school in the auditorium as an open discussion with teachers and students, just for people to voice their opinions and beliefs. And I was there, and it went fantastic. People were there, having composure and being able to professionally have discourse, and it was just amazing. Just seeing students, a lot of my peers, being civically engaged and wanting, and wanting to change their community and change our country in general is something that I feel like everyone in this room who is 18 and above should be proud of. So in light of the walkout tomorrow, so a student-led group will be walking out tomorrow as well, and during that, a Waukesha High School alum, who is the student government president at American University, will speak there as well. And we just want to let everyone know that the Waukesha High School SGA and administration are working together to make sure that the purpose of the walkout is, I guess, is voice. And everything is taken and measured for safety and make sure that it's supposed to be what it's meant to be. But in the end, I cannot emphasize how fantastic Waukesha High School is. Students, teachers, and staff try exceptionally hard to create a supportive and inclusive environment where everyone can be happy. That is something I personally fell in love with, personally, I fell in love with when I stepped foot into Y High four years ago. That was a long time ago, geez. But that is the general rundown of what is happening at Waukesha High School. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
If I can make a quick introduction, I'm not traditional, I'm very sorry, but I just want to briefly say, and all of the presidents touch upon this, the board came to us even before we came to the board with a concern. And this is a very sensitive topic, and it's very touching, and it means a lot to a lot of the students. So I just can't express enough, thank you, Mr. Briggs, thank you, Mr. Soffler, thank you, Ms. Bach, and thank you, board, for coming to us even before we've had a concern. Because I've had several students, and I know it's the same for presidents, come to us saying, "What do we do tomorrow?" And now we can say, "The board has given us a plan, and now our student government associations are prepared." So thank you.
One last thing to add. I hope the whole thing with the board of members and student representatives coming together, it shows that we wanted, that Waukesha County wanted to let students express their voice and actually creating a generation that will change the future. So we thank you so much.
Thank you.
We thank you because with the strong leadership from the four of you is what makes this county so great with the student population. So that's why you've been chosen to do what you do and keep it up. You're doing a great job. 3.5 on the agenda is public comment. The public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent of the board to listen to the individual's comments on topics concerning Waukesha County Public Schools. The board president has a right to limit public comment in length for those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify individuals, individual or individuals, appeals, or legal matters that are before the board, negotiation and topics that are more appropriate addressed in closed session or private with a staff member. I have about eight people that want to comment, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna limit to three minutes, your comments, and you can go to the podium over here. The first one is, excuse me, Tanya Lewis. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Good evening. How are you?
Just fine.
Wonderful. My name is Tanya Laird Lewis. I am currently the president of the Pittsville PTA. I'm also the vice president of the PTA at Willards Elementary School. My first concern, because I believe there's two issues listed on my form, okay, so that means I get six minutes? Thank you. So my, my first concern is, PTA at Willards is very generous with the funds that they raise. We had gone to Mrs. Rando last year, prior to her, the end of the school year, to her moving schools, and we wanted to, the PTA, wanted to pay for a pavilion to be put outside Willards Elementary School that would fit a class size, that would give shade to adults, substitutes, teachers, and students when they were outside during the spring and fall, still the warm temperatures. So we waited and waited and waited. Finally, the PIF was approved and reviewed in October. It got to me February 14th, 2018, and the bid was for $23,900 to erect a pavilion for our children. Now, there was a pavilion that was put to Pittsfield, which I'm pretty sure did not cost $23,900. So I went to them, and I said, you know, "I really don't feel that this is a reasonable request. The PTA is offering to pay for all, half, or if not all, of this," and we have heard nothing back. Our administrator, Judy Nicholson, had contacted, I actually have all the information here, contacted Mr. Todd and informed him that the PTA was not satisfied with the amount of money that it was gonna cost for that pavilion. However, the PTA did agree that we would put forth $6,000 and put in automatic water bottle filling stations in our school, so that our children are no longer using the older-style fountains. They are, you know, they help spread disease, things like that. So the PTA wanted to give something back to the school, so I do thank you that that was approved. However, we would really like to work and discuss the pavilion situation.
What's your first issue?
That's my first one. I still have 45 seconds.
I'll give you another three minutes.
Okay. So I want to thank all the parents that came out from the Pittsfield community today. I am just in awe of the amount of you that have come out to support me and my endeavors on this situation. I will tell you about 30 days ago, the safety team, the crisis team at Pittsfield, came to me, and they said, "We need your help. We need the PTA's help. We need you to help support our children." Every PTA meeting, I stand up and I read the mission statement. And the second part of the mission statement is to assist parents in developing skills they need to raise and protect their children. And I currently feel the issues that are going on and have conspired throughout the school year at Pittsfield Elementary School were doing our children a disservice. We have had two gun threats within the past 30 days, one at which students and faculty were notified of, and the other, it was, they were not. They were brought to my attention about this. I have directly spoken and contacted on multiple occasions within the past 30 days, Mr. Bob Culver. Mike Lewis actually called me while I was in a meeting this morning with Mr. Cody. Mr. Cody did assure me that protocol was followed based on code of conduct for the situation and the offense that occurred, and I'm extremely thankful for that, that Mr. Cody and Mrs. Downs were diligent with that situation. However, the situation could have been addressed and handled yesterday if we would have an on-site student resource officer. If we had a student resource officer in the school, they would be able to identify suspicious behavior. They would be able to immediately take that situation and diffuse it prior to it getting to the level that it got to this morning. The situation that occurred, I agree and understand that it has been handled. Mike Lewis has contacted multiple people, Bob Culver. I've spoken with council members, delegates, district representative for Jim Mathias. All of those things have conspired today and within the, in the last 30 days. But for the school to come to me and ask me for my support and my PTA member's support because we cannot get what we need to keep our children safe in the school, I feel that we're doing them a disservice. Mike Lewis gave me a direct quote in an email. "They currently fund positions for nine deputies, which includes every high school and middle school throughout the county," was the statement that I was given. So I decided I would sit down, and I would write the schools, and I would write the officers that were present on site in those schools. The only school lacking is Pittsfield Elementary School and Middle School. And my question is, why are we not being, our school is not being made as safe and held to the same safety standards as the remaining middle and high schools in our county? We do not feel that our school is safe enough. We do not have safety devices for the teachers to use in the classroom. Some classrooms don't have doors. Some classrooms do not have locks. We have an open breezeway that connects our two buildings. That is, our children walking through there literally are dead ducks. They are unsafe. We have no SRO to monitor them coming in and out of the building. We have out-of-date portables. Are those portables structurally sound to protect our students inside of them when the doors are locked from an intruder? I personally do not feel that they are not. Some of our parents that are here are gonna voice their, their opinions as well. There are so many proactive ways we can solve this problem instead of being reactive when it's too late. Two gun threats in 30 days is absolutely unacceptable, and I am here pleading for your support. I spoke with Mr. Cody. I had an email from him. We are ready for an SRO. We have an office cleared out, set up, and we already have our school's crisis plan implemented and ready to go. But I need the support. Our parents are here supporting. We have supporting of sheriffs. We have the support from Bob Culver. Jamie Dykes contacted me today. We need the support. Pittsfield no longer has an officer on that side of town. The substation was closed. Jamie informed me, we are on the same page, that we believe that the criminal activity rate in Willards and Pittsfield areas has increased, has significantly increased since they've closed that substation, and now there is no longer the presence of that Pittsfield cop car, and there's no SRO. So what, what are we doing? We're allowing our kids to go to school? Some of these children, their only safe haven is when they enter the building. Thank you for your time. I know I'm over my three minutes.
Jeff Spock.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I hate public speaking, so I'll be real short.
That's fine.
But I did feel I had to say something. I have two boys, one in 5th grade, I'm sorry, one in 6th grade and one in 7th grade at Pittsfield. Had it not been for my neighbors finding out through social media this morning, I would have had my kids in that school today. I did not allow my kids to get on the bus. I did not take them to school, only because I was brought to know... I was brought to knowledge of what was going on through parents in my neighborhood and social media. We were not contacted till well after the school day began as to what was going on. For a second threat to have been made and parents not to be notified is very disheartening. I do not feel safe with my kids being in that school right now. I have people on my street, we have a lot of kids on our street that go to that school, that do not feel safe with their kids attending Pittsfield right now. So we, as parents, would like to know why we do not have an officer there, except for after the fact of something happening. I keep hearing about the Florida situation, I'm sure those people didn't think that would happen in their town either. Just 'cause we're a small town does not mean stuff happened, you know, stuff doesn't happen. So we, as parents, want to feel assured that our kids are safe when they go to school, even in the country. Doesn't have to be a city environment for the big problems. So we would like to know what is being done, and maybe we're not allowed to know, but if that student is allowed to return to school, I personally will look into sending my kids to another area. Thank you.
Thank you. Lord, Jesus, did I say that right? Jesus.
Minda Dayhastin?
Yes.
Good evening. I am also a parent at Pittsfield. I have a child in the sixth grade and the seventh grade as well, and among all the other parents here tonight, my concern is, why is there two gun threats made by the same child in less than 30 days, and one, none of us were aware of? When things happen at Pittsfield, it's pushed under the rug. The issue with the gun threat is major, but the bullying issue is also a very big problem at Pittsfield. It is pushed under the rug. Mr. Cody, you go into him, and you hand him, you tell him what is going on, and he hands you a green form. Take this home and fill it out with your child tonight, we'll handle it. Nothing is handled, and it's not fair. These kids go to school every day, they don't go to school to make friends, they don't go to school to see who's got the best shoes on, they go to school to learn, and when they're put in predicaments where they're being called names, or they're being smacked or hit, they're not safe, they don't wanna be there. And that's not fair to these children. If you want, the bullying has to be addressed, and us parents are going to stand together and make sure it's going to be taken care of, because our step is to first go to our principal, and as many parents in this room that has a child that's been bullied has done that, they're now at wits' ends, because I've been to him three times in a year, for bullying on my kids. My wits' ends is now the police station, because now bullying is a law, and it is not allowed. And it is sad that we have to take it that far, but that's where we're gonna have to do it, to be the voice for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon White. Okay. All right.
Hi. So Tanya addressed most of what, you know, our concerns were without the resource officer. Also, I, you know, I have a concern that we were told we share with Parkside, which is, it said 15 minutes to take to Pittsfield, and that's on a good day, if he's flying down the highway. By the time a situation, you know, arises and everything, I mean, I would say 20, 25 minutes, which is entirely too late for them to be there, for safety. So, I don't really have much to say, I just wanted to, you know, address that issue of the time, you know, I don't think it's fair that we have to share, and we are the only middle school in the county that doesn't have an officer. And I think that it should be shared between Pittsfield and Willards, 'cause even though it's an elementary school, I know of several incidents that have occurred that needed an officer, and we don't have one available.
Thank you.
And again, I'm gonna just, hi, I'm just gonna kind of add on to the back of that, so I'm Dawn Tonner, I have two children, I have a 10 and 11-year-old that are going to Parkville, I've moved down from Baltimore City to a safe rural area, and currently, I'm not feeling so secure and safe these days. I'm actually here representing the children. Today, my daughter was home, and those little buggers love that social media, and I got the opportunity to listen to about seven of them in a little FaceTime that I had to intervene on, because I listened to children who were voicing their fears, the kid had a gun, he was in the school, I had to do the parenting on seven children today. Hearing these children with these things is just, and coming from Baltimore, maybe, but this area, I wasn't expecting it. So that being said, they asked me, one of the children just was like, "Well, what can we do?" And I said, "Well, let the parents handle it, well, what can you, what can parents do for us?" I said, "Come to a meeting, we're coming to a meeting tonight, we're gonna talk to some people that might be able to help us." I'm gonna piggyback on to the SRO situation. SRO shouldn't be a, I'm thinking about the whole Parkville and what they're, Parkside and what they're saying, that this SRO's up there, what good is an officer sitting there? That's kind of reactive, we need to be proactive. I'm a nurse, proactive, all about proactive. So proactive would be an officer at the building, present, interacting with our children, mentoring our children, interacting with kids that may have issues going on. All these other schools, Shaw, I came, I was, I did a little stint in Worcester County, Shaw, BIS, their officers are wonderful, they interact with the children, they may see something that we all don't see, pick up on these kids prior to these situations. This particular situation that happened this morning, obviously, something's been going on. I don't fault Mr. Cody, I don't blame any of the counselors, that extra set, he's there, we need somebody to facilitate, to help, somebody professional that understands, you know, these criminal acts that these kids nowadays have decided they wanna engage in. So for these children to be fearful, you know, I think an SRO would be a great addition to our school, I don't see why we don't have it. I understand things are about money and life and budgeting, but I think we should look past that, and we should do what's best for our children, that should not be an issue. Also, a safety assessment of that school. As you see, I'm on a cane, I've been out of work for a couple of months, so I'm not trespassing, please don't lock me up. I've done some recon, I've learned that there's a back entrance to that school, didn't know about it prior to, 'cause I work a lot, and I've had the opportunity to see that breezeway, and to see that back of the school, and I'm gonna tell you, not safe. Anybody can get access to that. That scares me. Those kids are in and out of that breezeway, doors are being left propped open, I've come, I've gotten kind of access. You know, should I have done that? Well, if I was a shooter, I would have loved to do that. Front door, they're pretty good at monitoring, I walked in, another gentleman was walking up, I didn't know who he was, so I let the door slam, I had to apologize to him, because I think everybody should be hitting that buzzer to get in there, and have the opportunity. If I'm out there and, you know, he's crazy and I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it out there, that's, that's okay, the kids will be safe. However, in our everyday life, we hold doors for people, we're polite, we can't do that anymore. So, some meetings on safety, maybe at the school, but it's definite safety, it sounds like we have some things in place there already, I'm just catching up to speed on what's going on, I've been talking to Tanya a little bit, trying to hear about our safety stuff, I have some time now to get involved. And like I said, my main issue is these children who are scared, who get secondhand information, who are all, now, you know, my daughter's like, "If we go to school tomorrow," especially the 10-year-old, "If we go to school tomorrow, somebody's gonna be in there with a gun." I hear that kid came back, they're all chattering away. So those are my concerns, I know we're all here working, you know, as a team, and I'm hoping we can resolve some of our issues here at Pittsfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Felicia Shannon.
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 It's been said.
Okay. And Shani Hastings.
Hi, I'm Shani Hastings, I work as a dispatcher for Maryland State Police, so I'm kinda coming at this a little bit of a different angle here. I want you to raise your hand in this room right now, how many people have heard of Parkland, Florida, prior to the shooting? Prior to the shooting? How many people heard about Columbine, Colorado, prior to the shooting? What about Sandy Hook? Prior to the shooting? Anybody? One person? Small towns, small areas, just because we're a small town does not mean that we're not susceptible. Apparently, we're more susceptible. Why has nobody thought about this? Why has, why Comico County Schools not stopped up as Worcester County Schools have? Worcester County Schools currently, after the Florida incident, put a deputy in every single school. If they could not supply one full-time due to staffing issues, they put a road deputy in there, three hours at a time, to be relieved by another road deputy, three hours at a time, until the school day has ended. Every single school, high school, middle school, elementary, is fully staffed by a deputy, as they should be. Right now, Wycomico County Schools are being reactive. My kid's worth more than that. Are your kids worth more than that?
Yep.
Yes.
Are your kids worth more than that? Do you all have children? I'm assuming you do. I mean, why not? Why, I want an answer as to why my kid is not worth an SRO and somebody being proactive and being in there with those kids every day to monitor them, to recognize situations? I believe I'm probably standing in front of experts on education, is that correct? You probably want to think of yourself as that.
Not an expert.
How about you all be the expert in education, and let the SROs be the experts in criminal investigation and in law investigation, and do their jobs, and come in our schools and protect our kids, because that's where they belong. I wanna know, when I can send my kid to school in the morning, he's gonna come home in the afternoon. I've got one at Willards, and I've got one at Pittsfield, I want them protected, they deserve that. So every last person in here, and every one of those kids, you all are doing a disservice to us by not supplying our children with protection. Does anybody know the average of an active shooter? And you want the school deputy from Parkside, as she stated, on a good day, 20 minutes? So then that school deputy has to turn around and look at all his friends, because there's a lot of parents who are deputies, that attend, that they have kids that attend our schools, he's gotta face them and say, "Man, I just couldn't get there in time." I don't wanna be that person, I don't wanna be the person dispatching and looking at somebody and saying, "He just couldn't get there in time." You need school deputies there.
We don't respond, we listen, but I can tell you for one, tonight, Don Fitzgerald hears you loud and clear. My objective is to make sure everybody, students, administrators, and anybody on our school property is safe. So we do hear you loud and clear. I thank you for being here.
Chris, can I ask one thing, please?
No, you, you have signed, Ben, you sign, sign, or come up here? Well, then you come over here and talk, please.
Most of you know me, I'm Ben Bromley, I'm the president of the Wycomico County Council PTA, and I'm glad to see the parents here tonight, and I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you are saying that you're supporting the parents. I got two things to say. One is, I don't wanna hear that you don't have the money. This Board of Education hired a publicist last year, and I guarantee you, his salary will, if not will pay, but will almost pay for two officers in the schools, guaranteed. Number two is, every meeting that I've been to, the Board of Education in the last two to three years, there's been an officer sitting out in the foyer. There's one there tonight. There was not one at my kid's school today. I do not have a kid in the school, I do have seven nieces and nephews that attend Pittsfield and Willards Elementary, actually, eight, counting the Willards. And I was appalled this morning at what I heard. I was appalled even further at what I heard tonight. And I want a meeting with Mrs. Hanlon and Mr. Stoffer concerning what I heard today, because of what I was told this morning when I called the Board of Education. But I'm telling you, it's time you make my kids safe in my schools. Thank you.
So I have a few things, and I'm wondering, is Donnell Van Holton here, or any other people from Horizons? No?
Yeah, I think we're out.
Okay, if they are out there.
Here goes Steve.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead with the one part of my report first, I just wanted, I hadn't been able to see you to know whether you were here. So Mrs. Dooling will come and talk to you about your presentation in a few minutes. But I, I want to, and, and to share with the public, and for those of you who are here, some of the things that we are implementing, which actually, I'm hearing you talk about tonight. So I want you to know, and it's easy for me to say, that your children's safety in our schools is our top priority, I know that's easy for me to say, and you need to see it to believe it, but we are doing a number of things that we believe will address some of your concerns, or concerns system-wide, to make sure that our schools are as safe as they can be. So one of the things, and I believe it was Mrs. Tonner, who mentioned the school safety assessment, that is the first thing that we are going to be doing. In fact, we've already had conversations with the Maryland Center for School Safety, to engage with them, or to seek their assistance in an organization or an entity that can assist us with that, in addition to the Sheriff's Office. So sooner rather than later, we will be doing a full audit, a full assessment of all of our schools, looking at the very things that you're talking about. We've had a number of meetings, and we've talked about a lot of things that we need to do, including fencing, secure vestibules, things related to portable classrooms, school resource officers, all of the things that you're talking about. We need an assessment, we need someone to come in with some credibility in this area, as you said, someone said it, we're not experts in safety and security, we need to rely on those people who are. So we will be doing an assessment of all of our schools, and then we will be prioritizing those needs. We are hearing you loud and clear about a school resource officer at Pittsfield, and it's something.
In Willards.
And in that area, and that is something that is certainly, as Mr. Fitzgerald said, on our radar, we are hearing you loud and clear. Some of the other things that we're doing, I'm going to be creating the Superintendent's Safety and Security Advisory Council, so that as you have ideas, that there is, not only can you communicate with us, but there is an advisory council made up, again, of those with some expertise in the area of safety and security, that can consider some of the ideas that are put forth by students. As you've heard, we have amazing student leaders with great ideas about the safety and security in our schools. So there is funding available, Mr. Culver, we've had conversations with Bob Culver about the fact that he sees a very appropriate use of the, the fund balance that the county council has, as funding things that we prioritize for our schools in terms of safety and security. And the governor, at, the governor, I see this happening in one of two ways, it's either gonna come through a governor's executive order, or through legislation, that we're looking at lots of dollars coming into Maryland's schools to address safety. $125 million coming to address facilities in terms of safety and security. $50 million that's looking at addressing students' mental health issues through personnel and other initiatives that would look at mental health issues in our schools. And then, I'm not sure if, how many people are familiar with the Maryland Center for School Safety, but the governor is also looking at adding, I think, really adding a lot of money to the, to the Maryland money to the, to the Maryland Center for School Safety. Looking at regional centers, looking at analysts, and, and I want to make sure I get this wording right, give me a second. Oh, to hire analysts and social media trackers, which will be of great help to us, to make sure that we're on top of things that are happening in our schools. So, a lot of dollars are being funneled. We just need to have an assessment done so that we can target how to spend those dollars in the best way possible to make sure that our students are safe. There is a statewide meeting that's coming up next week, on the 22nd, that we are sending a team to, and it's not just a team of school system folks, it's our, our school safety staff, our risk management staff, but also school resource officers, school psychologists, EMS, tactical representative from the Sheriff's Office, who are all going to be coming together to brainstorm, again, on best practices in Maryland for school safety and security. So we have a team going to that, that will come back with some, some great ideas, I'm sure. We are continuing to review our school safety plans and schools, we are holding schools accountable for whether they are holding the drills that they are responsible for having, but we're also in conversation with the Sheriff's Office to do some wide-scale threat drills, active shooter drills. We're still in conversation with the Sheriff's Office about what that will look like, but we believe that that's an important drill to hold and things that we need to, to do in order to be prepared as best we could, heaven forbid, that something were to happen in one of our schools. A number of other things, you've heard our student leaders, we, we did, Mr. Briggs and Mr. Stoffer met with the four student leaders, brought them together to talk about. What are your thoughts on how we're going to handle Student Walkout Day? You heard from them. And based upon those meetings, we're going to continue to be meeting with our student leaders to, to discuss, because, you know, Rowan, you said, "We gave you a plan." No, we didn't. You helped us with a plan. You, you came together and you talked about what you believed would work in your schools, and that's really important.
And you were there to support us with our plan, so thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Let me make sure I've, oh, and, and a See Something, Say Something campaign, as simple as that sounds, we really, you talked about your children being on social media today. We have to teach our children to be responsible on social media, and to talk to adults, responsible adults, in the right way when something, when they know or hear something is happening in a school. And that is critically important, so we're going to be working with students to produce a student video about if you see something, say something, be responsible, report it, don't spread rumors. We recognize the issues that you've talked about with bullying. We encourage parents, and let me make sure that I'm clear about this, if you are not any school, whether it's Pittsville, any school, if you are not satisfied with something that's happening at the school level, you need to call the central office, and is, in the case of a secondary school, Mr. Micah Stoffer is our Director of Secondary Education. Our secondary principals report to Mr. Stoffer, he will be happy to assist you with what your concerns are. Mrs. Susan Jones, thank you, is our Director of Elementary Education. If you have an issue with the way something has been handled in an elementary school, please let us try to help you. I would encourage you to, I mean, you are more than welcome to communicate with the Sheriff's Office, I would encourage you to do that if you have an issue. But we want to help you as well. So I encourage you to just keep those lines of communication open. So I think I've covered the majority of the major things that we're doing, but we're constantly, we are in constant conversation about these things, and I think the biggest takeaway that I'd like for you to have tonight is that we are doing an audit, we are doing it sooner rather than later, so that we can determine how to prioritize what, how to make our schools more safe and secure. So I appreciate your listening to my, my list of things, but I wanted to make sure that it was inclusive and that, that you know that we are listening to you. So that's the first item on my report. The second item on my report is, a little change of pace here, we have some individuals from our Horizon's Summer Program, Mrs. Van Holton, excuse me, Dr. Van Holton, are you going to be speaking? Would you like to come down front, please, and introduce your, those who are speaking to us this evening? We have a great relationships with, relationship with the Horizon's Summer Program, and we're happy to, to have you come and present to us each year about what's coming up.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Hold on one second, let's, I think we have a...
Thank you. I'm gonna mess something up here. So, good evening, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Steve Marsh, and I'm an engineer here in town at GMB. I'm also the current board chair for Horizon Salisbury. I'm here to give you a brief overview of what we've done the last year and what we're looking forward to, and then I'm going to turn it over to our program director, Dr. Van Holton. First of all, we want to thank you for your continued support and partnership in our program with busing and with meals for the students. Last summer, with your help, we provided 120 Wycomico students with summer learning and enrichment programs, we're very happy about that, we thank you. This year, we recently hired our new executive director, Ms. Brittany Glenn, who's here with us tonight. She was previously a teacher and a librarian, and so we're excited for her to share her passion for literacy, teaching, and children with her Horizon students. We're very excited about that. We also recently expanded our board with several new board members, some of them here tonight. We have Dr. Althea Pennerman from Salisbury University. For the first time, we have a former, a, a parent of a former student on the board, Ms. Danielle White, and we have a, we have a former student on the board, Ms. Brianna Ward Middleton, she's here with us tonight. We also have two new teachers, Ms. Carol Rollins and Ms. Erin Lucas, so we're really excited to have all of their input on the board as we look to expand our program. So this summer, we'll be in session from June 25th to August 3rd at both of our sites, with Rising 1st through Rising 5th at the Salisbury School, and Rising 6th through Rising 9th at Salisbury University, with a goal of providing programs for 132 students. We have found that the Salisbury University site works great for the middle school students because there's a lot of opportunities for them to see different things. So again, we thank you for your continued support of the program and hope that we can count on your support and partnership moving forward into the future. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Van Holton.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you again for having us here this evening to present about our Horizon's program, and thank you for all the support that you've given us throughout the last 15 years. This evening, I have a parent, and her name is Ronaldo Hairston. She will talk a little bit about Horizons, and we have her two daughters, that they will be also speaking on behalf of Horizons. One of them is a graduate from Horizons, and then the other one will be graduating this year from the Horizon's program.
My name's Ronaldo Hairston, and this is my daughter, Brandy, and my daughter, Drew. Horizons has been a wonderful experience for our family. I'm a mom, raising these two teenage girls, and our journey with Horizons began about eight years ago. I was fortunate enough that both of them were accepted into the program, and as a family, we have volunteered with Horizons, with the Salvation Army, and we fed families in need during the holiday season. We volunteered for the Tim Kinnard Run that's coming up again, maybe four or five times, and we've also worked with the Horizon Showcase numerous times. All of these events, I believe, have taught my daughters and myself the importance of volunteering, community involvement, teamwork, and giving back to a program that has taught and given us all so much. Brandy was just invited to the National Honor Society, she attends Y-Hi, she's very active and cheerleading, SGA, Student Government, chorus, and drama, and she volunteers, she completed all of her volunteer hours, I believe, the end of ninth grade that are required. I believe Brandy has over 200 volunteer hours, and she's just in the 10th grade. And Drew here is a student at Y Middle, she's in the eighth grade, and she's in marching band. Aren't you in chorus as well? I keep them very active, but Horizons has supported us over the years. When Brandy needed tutoring in middle school, they were able to provide that for us. I just had to pick up the phone and ask Dr. Van Holton to give us some help, and she made sure that the girls received what they needed, so they each wanted to share briefly what they've learned in Horizons over the years.
Pull the mic, pull that mic right to you. There you go.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, I just wanted to say, Horizons has taught me how to have good work ethics, teamwork skills, and they also taught me how to swim, and the gift of long-term friendships, and I feel all these things will help me continue to have a successful future and reach my educational goals.
Wonderful. Drew has aspirations of being a radiologist, that's what her plan is for now.
Right.
And Brandy?
So, hi.
Hi.
The program has helped me a lot, I believe, with responsibility and leadership skills that I feel like I wouldn't have gained otherwise, and communication skills as well, joining new things like tennis and cheerleading and making new friends overall, and they helped me academically as well, my grades are, were a lot better, like, once I started the program. I've been striving for straight A's, and hopefully, I've got that, so I'm, I'm excited, and I'm really happy that I've been benefited from this program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work, much.
Just wanted to also, as part of my report, mention briefly that we had a very successful teacher recruitment fair on Saturday, and I want to thank Mrs. Patty Atkins and others who served on that team in, in organizing our second, actually, teacher recruitment fair. We had one in January, I believe it was, where the turnout was a little less because it's mid-year and not as many people thinking about jobs and, and looking that far out to the future, but on Saturday, we had 100 candidates come who wanted to teach in Wycomico schools. Our school administrators were there, our content supervisors were there to talk with them, and I believe we even opened, or offered a couple of open contracts on the spot. So, very, very successful, and that's what we need to do. We, you know, we're, we're experiencing a teacher shortage, and we expect that that teacher shortage is probably going to grow, and so we recognize that we need to get out ahead of it, and that's what we're doing. So, very successful fair, and like to thank staff who were very much a part of it on Saturday. And I'm going to turn the next part of my report over to Mr. Butler for the Extra Mile Award.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hanlon. Of course, our Extra Mile Award goes to two employees here in Wycomico County Public Schools who went above and beyond. We've got two well-deserving candidates here tonight who won the award for the month of February. The first up is Mr. Steven Byrd. He is a custodian at Wycomico High School, just an amazing gentleman. I'll read a little bit about his Extra Mile Award nomination. Steve has continued to support his department in many ways through staff shortages and the recent need for increased levels of cleaning in his department. His support and additional attention to detail has helped to keep the building safe at Wycomico High School. He always goes out of his way to help in any way he can in our building, many times being pulled from one end of the campus to the other, is always doing that. He continues to do all of his work he's required while also keeping a smile on his face, a positive attitude, and all the while, singing in the cafeteria while cleaning. Is that true? So you got some fans out there, love your singing. Mr. Byrd is, was sat here, is multiple times a day, never do I see him not working and doing the extra that is asked to do. In addition to his usual duties, he also interacts with students in a positive manner and encourages them along the way, and I hope that every school has a Mr. Byrd, and would love to see him appreciated as the Extra Mile Award winner. So, Mr. Byrd, thank you very much for coming on up, and we'll have to thank you.
And this is for you, sir. Place the plaque, and when you stand there, I'll take your picture. While we're waiting for me to do this, why don't you sing a little bit? All right, thank you very much.
Our second Extra Mile Award winner for the month of February is Dee Maddox. She's an accounting assistant. There you go. She's an accounting assistant in the Birth to Five program. Dee Maddox, of course, truly goes above and beyond her job description each and every day, and always does so with a beautiful smile on her face. Administrative assistants are often overlooked as an important members of the team because they typically do so much behind the scenes that isn't necessarily visible to others. Well, she schedules meetings, keeps parents informed, documents important information, obtains required paperwork, does so much, but many families are not aware of her role that she really is in charge. Without her management, required deadlines for important paperwork would likely be missed. After working for the Board of Education for over 20 years, Dee is retiring at the end of this school year. And Marie Ford of the Special Education Preschool says she's had the pleasure of working with Dee for the past 10 years, and truly going to be missed when she's gone. So Dee Maddox, come forward.
I better do it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Butler and Dr. Hanlon, I must just say as well, excuse me for interrupting, but Mr. Byrd, I don't know what we would do without you in special education either. He takes his shirt off at night, I know there are wings that are under that shirt. Because of all that you do to help our students that have such multiple needs, we are forever grateful and salute you and thank you for your selfless service.
And last but not least, we have our grant report from Mrs. Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have had five grants funded in the month of February totaling $2,800, all from the Salisbury-Wycomico Arts Council, one to support the Solar System Collaborative Stitching Program at Y-Hi, oh, I'm sorry, at Willards, one for Salisbury Poetry Week at Salisbury Middle, another for the art journaling for students with behavioral disorders at Y-Hi, Pinehurst, and Y Middle, another for the TAD program, Chocolate with a Conscience, and Respect and Responsibility and Integrity at Y-Hi. There were two grants submitted during the month of February totaling $4,429.54, both to the Tanger Kids Grants Program, one for Yes Clay is Hands-on Learning for Parkside, and one for Beaver Run for Flexible Seating for Diverse Learners. Total funds requested year-to-date totaled $2,919,110.15, and amount funded totals $2,755,414.61, and I stand for any questions. And I stand for any questions.
Only comment is, uh, you know, I don't know how you do it at ninety-four point three nine percent of what you ask for and then to keep up the good work and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, four point one is approve the open session minutes. From February the eighth, special meeting. February the thirteenth, regular meeting. February thirteenth, work session. February the twentieth, work session. Everyone's had the opportunity to look over them. I entertain a motion.
Move we approve the minutes? A second?
I got a motion, a second, and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same. Next on the agenda is consent items. And we have, I think it's fourteen on the agenda. I know there's one board member that's got some questions and I've got one question, so. Anybody have any other? John, you want to bring yours up now?
Don, I had questions on, uh, the vehicle purchases. Uh, uh, one, I haven't read any part of the report, but I need, would like to know the total cost of the vehicles, total cost this year as compared to what was requested and awarded last year. I would like to know, is there a priority listing of the vehicles that are being requested?
Mr. Miller.
I'm not sure how I answer any of those questions because I was not prepared or asked those prior to this or in any other previous session. I can tell you that the vehicles that are being replaced are replacing vehicles in the system already. I thought there was a letter that went out explaining the condition of the vehicles.
It was.
Two pickup trucks replacing two vans. The two sedans are replacing two sedans. Uh, they are similar price to what they've been in the past, uh, as indicated on the agenda. Uh, there is more vehicles being purchased this year than in the past because operations and maintenance have decided that two of the vehicles that are fairly old and heavy, the dump truck and the, um, aerial lift are both reaching the end of their useful life. So they've cobbled, uh, funds together to replace them. The other vehicle, which is the, uh, food service delivery vehicle, is a, replacing a large box truck. I'm, am I not close enough? I'm not used to talking. Uh, it's replacing a large box truck with a, a newer vehicle. And I believe that one, if I remember correctly, was a two thousand and three vehicle that was being replaced, uh, just basically because it's heavy and it's been lifting and carrying its weight for a long time.
Yeah, Mr. Palmer, I'm, I'm sorry if you did not get access to the full report that we submitted to the board, so I apologize.
I, I read that report and that still doesn't answer the questions I have. You've heard tonight from parents talking about safety and this is going to cost dollars. Now, we are promised a lot of funds for safety. However, a promise is, a promise, it's not money in hand. So until I can find out, I'd like to know what the full total prices we're going to be repairing, replacing. Uh, I know down at my university, we've moved to renting a number of vehicles. We've downsized our dump trucks from, uh, ten-wheelers down to, uh, eight-wheelers and they work perfectly fine with plows on them with sand and we even have, uh, salt spreaders on the back. And they're a lot less expensive than full, uh, ten-wheel dump trucks. Uh, so there's some questions I, these types of questions I would like to have answers to before I put a vote on it. So, tonight, uh, Don, I just don't feel comfortable voting on the vehicle block.
Do you still need those questions?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, to, to answer the questions about the cost, the cost for each one of the items is attached to the agenda items. So, for example, um, the, uh, the cargo vans, um, this particular one is twenty-eight thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, and each one of the line items there has the specific cost associated with it. So, I hope that answers your question relative to specific costs for each one of the items.
So if I read this right, there's, it's seven total vehicles and then there's gonna be seven that are also sold, right?
That's, that's.
So we're not increasing the fleet?
That's exactly correct.
But then we, okay, you were looking at the cost though, okay.
And Bruce, as I understand correctly, all these are pretty much standard with the normal practice of either, um, if they've been over a hundred thousand miles and beginning to rack up.
Ten years, that's correct.
Beginning to rack up more cost and maintenance, then it's worth to keep the vehicle.
That, that's correct. A, as you know, the board, uh, back in twenty thirteen under Dr. Townsend's leadership, adopted that replacement program with the board's approval. Uh, and, and I attached a copy of that in the report to the board. So I hope that, that will answer any questions that you may have as to the reasons as to why, uh, the replacement of the vehicles. And as, uh, was mentioned, uh, we're not increasing the fleet. This is a, a one-for-one replacement.
I drive the, uh, I work in a local university. I drive the oldest vehicle on the campus. Uh, I'm gonna drive it until I retire, uh, the first of August and then they told me they're gonna take it and put it in the scrap pile. So, I know what it's like to drive vehicles that have mileage on it. So, uh, I, and I see the reports, I see rust and stuff like that. Well, you should see my vehicle and you might wanna buy me one. So, but these specific questions I would still like to have answers for.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have, our contract for work vehicles has worked out, uh, great for renting them for X number of years. Uh, we're doing it with just, uh, work vans and some of our fleet vans that go out that the students use to go to different, uh, events around Maryland and all. So, uh, I still, I still have answers on these, this area.
Good. Any other?
I just had a comment on it. Um, hearing, of course, what we all have heard tonight and, and things and monies and everything is tight and I understand that. I was wondering, in this replacement of these vehicles, I understand we're, you know, getting rid of a certain number and replacing a certain number, we're not increasing. But is there any way that perhaps one or two of them could wait a year or two? I just, you know, I'm, I'm wondering, that's.
Well, a, a, absolutely, that's the, that's the board's, uh, prerogative. Uh, we are basically, uh, uh, applying a, uh, procedure that the board had previously adopted and, and applying it to the age of the fleet and those vehicles that, um, that particular procedure identifies as needing replacement. So, absolutely, the board can decide to, to, or choose to not replace one of those vehicles. That's always the board's decision. We are bringing to the board what the procedure identifies as what needs to be replaced because of, of, as you mentioned, safety issues. Uh, we have a lot of individuals driving these vehicles.
Any other comments on any other? Uh, the only, excuse me, go ahead.
Uh, I was gonna ask, um, when we have this many and it, it's hard to kind of read through each individual contract and I know we wanna have that, is there any way to summarize in a spreadsheet so we can see it all in one, one document about what the estimated costs are so we can see them all, everything together? That would be helpful for me to kind of look at and, and, uh, in addition to providing the individual contracts, it, it would, you know, be helpful to see it all in one.
We can do that in the future.
Only thing I'd like to add, I think, uh, Bruce, and correct me if I'm wrong, aren't we, again, basing these on, uh, practice that other industries as well as, uh, and school systems are doing pretty much throughout?
Absolutely. As, as, uh, the board may remember, Dr. Townsend went and did the research and based upon state of Maryland and the national, uh, uh, rules and regulations for fleets, uh, was used to develop this procedure, that's correct.
And I fully understand that and, uh, like I say, promised dollars are not dollars in my hand at the time. So if I had to prioritize something, it would be what was mentioned tonight before I would move on to the vehicles unless I had some more information.
Uh, I had a question on five fourteen, uh, but that's since been, uh, uh, excuse me, five thirteen, uh, about athletic clothing, but it's been answered. So I'll.
Okay.
You know, Mike and I have had conversations, so hopefully, uh, the issue I had has been resolved.
Okay. Thank you.
So, any other questions? So I guess we need to decide if we're gonna approve the, uh, consent items or how do you want to go about it?
I, I'd support Mr. Palmer's request to have his, his questions answered before we vote on the vehicle contracts.
I, I agree with that, Bill, and second that.
All right, so what I'm looking at is five point seven.
Through five point twelve.
Through five point twelve, be removed. Till we get answers to the questions that have been asked tonight. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion to remove five point seven to five point twelve from the agenda item tonight. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, same. Okay, now, I'll need a, a motion for five point two, five point three, five point four, five point five, five point six, five point thirteen, and five point fourteen. Yeah, five point one also, excuse me, thank you. I'll need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same. Thank you. Moving on, six point one. Beaver Run Elementary Replacement. Per the superintendent's recommendations, our motion to accept the proposal of the attached exhibit one from the firm of Court, Court Copeland and Mott for services related to design and engineering, engineering for Beaver Run Elementary School Replacement Project and to authorize issuance of contract consent with the items set forth in the proposal. Final contract shall be in the form of acceptable to the superintendent and the board's legal counsel. It shall include all the final contract documents, general conditions, and supplementary conditions of the contract. Request is also made to authorize issuance of notice to proceed, NTP, to begin work on the project and to accept additional services as noted here in. Scope of services, basic design service, one million seven hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Additional services, one through five, forty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars. A total of one million eight hundred and eight thousand and thirty dollars. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second, discussion. Any comments? I have two people in front of me, he's gonna give me some talk about it.
Good evening, superintendent and board, I feel like it's been forever. Missed you guys. Sorry. Hope you missed me too.
We missed you.
Great.
I didn't get a postcard.
I didn't get my Christmas card. Um, I know it's getting late and it's daylight savings time, so we're all out of it. But anyway, just wanna quickly walk you through the procedures that we go through to actually get to this point. Um, we started back in, actually, December, mid-December, and we put out an RFQ to, um, solicit, um, opportunities from anybody out there that could submit, um, request for qualifications is what that stands for. So we're looking for qualifications from architecture firms, pretty much from anywhere. So, we had forty-six requests for the package of the RFQ. Um, that was in mid-December. Come mid-January, when they were actually due, of the forty-six, only eight actually submitted, which is pretty common. Um, from what we see, a lot of firms just like to see what the RFQ looks like because they like our stuff so much, but don't really wanna submit. Um, so once we get the qualifications in, um, there's a committee that convenes. We read through individually through all the statements. They're pretty thick, you know, they're sixty, seventy pages long. And the committee individually rates them and then we meet as a team and we do our best to shortlist. So, of the eight, we felt that the top four should be shortlisted. And once we did that, we sent out an RFP and made that available to the shortlisted firms. Um, of the four firms, all of them submitted. Um, they were due on February ninth. Um, after the RFPs are submitted, we hold interviews. Uh, I think our interview committee was eight individuals. We had a cross-section of facility, instruction, admin, SBC members. So it's a very robust team and I feel like it gets a, a good cross-section of pretty much all interest. So, we held the interviews. Uh, we had the Court Copeland Mott came out top-ranked. Uh, we went to the superintendent, the CFOO, and the CAO, um, got permission to enter into negotiations with the top-ranked firm. And basically what that means is Lisa and I start crunching numbers. We take their fees, this isn't the first one we receive from them. Uh, we compare it to recent jobs. Uh, we compare it to other, uh, we look at hours and how much time it should take and we start dissecting the fees and then we get with the, um, consultant and we start going over the fees and we get them to lower them in sections. We feel they're too high and we also, at the same time, confirm scope. We wanna make sure we're getting exactly what we've asked for. So, we went through that process, we had some great conversations. We were able to reduce the fee in a few areas and also confirmed our scope. Um, from there, we move forward, took it back to the superintendent and she approved it to bring to you tonight. And as Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned, we're looking for, um, authorization to issuance of a notice proceed to begin the work. And I can tell you, Court Copeland Mott is very excited to start this process. And if you don't remember, they did our feasibility study and the ed spec. So, they're very invested in the project and very excited to start. Any questions, glad to answer.
Have we had a similar contract with them in the past?
Yes, they did the Bennett Middle School.
Okay.
And we also compared it to other architects, um, the West Salisbury job that we're doing currently. So we were able to analyze those numbers as well as Bennett High School, so.
So your, your experience with them in the past would lead you to be willing to work with them again?
Correct, and they're on.
Otherwise, you wouldn't be proposing.
They're also one of our pre-qualified firms as well and working on a few other jobs like Dalmar.
Any other question, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't let Lisa say anything.
She talked earlier.
Still just wanna talk with Mr. Ford a little more.
Upon the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion? The board approved the proposed consolidated current expense budget for FY two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion. Jesse, welcome.
Thank you.
You got, you got all the answers tonight, right?
I hope so.
Jesse, I'm gonna.
Sure, yeah.
I'm gonna kick it off if you don't mind. I just wanna tell the board how pleased I am to present to you tonight for your consideration and final approval, the FY consolidated expense budget. We have spent a lot of time, as you know, in work sessions, considering the needs of the school system. And this budget represents our commitment to realizing the four vision points that were endorsed by the board probably about a year ago. And, um, described through Achieve one point O with then specific strategies, looking at universal pre-kindergartens, looking at pathways to increase graduation rates, and looking at, uh, attracting and retaining a high-performing workforce. Um, and those have all been described through, uh, Achieve two point O. And so, to accomplish our priorities, I do appreciate the board's support and the community's support and encouragement in seeking additional revenues um, above maintenance of effort to bring our school system in line with other school systems and to achieve success in the twenty-first century for our students. Because we recognize the needs of the community, that's why we are phasing in each one of those priorities. Each one of them is, um, as you know, phase one and certainly doesn't complete the work that we have to do in those areas. But we recognize the, the idea or the fact that the county has other needs and so our request is above maintenance of effort. And so our request is above maintenance of effort, but we believe that it is reasonable. So I'm, I'm very excited about the possibilities that this budget will allow for as we imagine the, the future of Wycomico County Schools, um, in twenty twenty-two and beyond.
Uh, share with the people that might be looking about the nine point two million dollar and the deficit, how we went about getting it. So it's a good budget, because I'm sure we're gonna be questioned, how'd you make up nine point two million dollars?
Yes, sir, Bruce actually has some highlights that he, that are gonna.
Thank you. It's a good segue, Mr. Fitzgerald, thank you.
Thank you.
You teed it up for me. Um, as, as the board knows, and, um, as we now will share with the, uh, the community, uh, there is a, a long budget process, uh, a process that is first, um, approved by the full Board of Education in their August meeting through the adoption of a budget calendar. And that budget calendar sets the, uh, dates upon which various items as part of that development process dates as to when those specific things must be accomplished. And that calendar becomes our framework through which, uh, staff and the board operates uh, in developing, uh, all of the, uh, in compiling all of the requests that come in. And, and as you mentioned, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, there were numerous requests, uh, in excess of nine million and more, uh, through which, uh, they were vetted, reviewed with staff, reviewed with the board, to result in the culmination of the document, um, that you have in front of you, and that upon approval tonight will be posted to the board's website as a PDF for anybody's review. Uh, and first off, I'd like to start off by saying a, a big thank you to Mr. Reed, our comptroller, and Ms. Donna Rosatano, our budget manager, and their staff in compiling, uh, the information that was submitted, uh, by the assistant superintendents and our directors. Uh, they did a yeoman's job in completing, um, within the timeline that was established by the board. And the document that you have in front of you tonight, I'd like to take a few minutes and walk through with you and with the community, so that you can get an idea as to, uh, where to look for some important information, uh, that you may be asked, uh, out in the community. So I'd like to start off by saying, let's turn to page fifty-eight. And Mr. Reed is gonna do the same thing, uh, so the community can actually see in reference when the document is posted on the website.
Jesse, can you make that bigger?
Sure.
Page fifty-eight in the budget book is what we refer to is our general fund revenue sheet. And I'd like to point out that this reflects a request from our county government to the tune of forty-eight point seven million dollars, or an increase of five point seven million over the previous year. While this request represents an increase of thirteen point three percent over the prior year, it only reaches FY two thousand seven levels of county funding to the Board of Ed. So in other words, this amount that we are requesting only begins to approach the level that was being funded back in FY two thousand seven. Page sixty-one. Page sixty-one is important because it reflects the actual maintenance of effort calculation. This particular calculation is what is required by law for each county to fund their local school system at the minimum level as stated in the annotated code of the state of Maryland. And for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, as you can see, the total amount that must be funded, new money, Jesse, if you'll scroll down a little bit.
Sure.
Is an additional six hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. So that's the minimum amount, additional money or resources that the county must fill in order to comply with law. Page sixty-six. As Dr. Hanlon mentioned, this particular budget represents the three strategic priorities that were outlined in her State of the Schools Report to the community. The first priority, which totals almost one point four million dollars, represents phase one of the pre-K initiative for Wycomico County Public Schools. The request, as you can see, includes a request for eleven classroom teachers and eleven assistants, as well as supplies, materials, and equipment to outfit those eleven classrooms. Again, this represents phase one. Page sixty-seven. This particular page reflects priority number two of the strategic priorities. These are the requests for alternative pathways toward graduation, increased graduation rate, signatory programs, and ESOL, English as a Second Language request. As you can see, these requests for various positions, supplies, materials, and services total two point three million. Then on page sixty-eight, priority number three, recruit and retain a highly qualified workforce. This particular request is for three point six million, representing salaries, wages, and benefits for our staff, for existing staff. Total request of the three strategic priorities, seven point three million dollars. Page seventy-four. Once again this year, the superintendent is recommending that the board approve a request of the county executive for one-time, non-recurring cost items. The first item on that list represents phase two for the pre-K initiative. Three point two million dollars for a two-ten classroom modular building that would help to implement phase two, which would be rolled out in fiscal year nineteen twenty. Also in addition, there was a request for a little over seven hundred thousand dollars for technology in rank order one, two, three, and four, for various technologies in our schools. Total one-time, non-recurring, non-recurring quest of just a tad over three point nine million. Pages one thirty-eight to one forty-one, and this is getting to what, um, Mr. Fitzgerald teed up for me, in that there were many other requests. Pages one thirty-eight, one forty-one through one forty-one is a summary of those requests that, that did not make the original cuts, and as a result, are not submitted for approval. But because this board has always requested us to summarize for the community the requests that have come in from the various departments and schools, these pages represent over six million dollars worth of such requests that are not at this moment being recommended for funding. As mentioned, after approval of this budget, the entire document will be reflected and posted on the board's website for review. We will be meeting with the county executive tomorrow to present this budget for his review with him and his staff. And then next will be a meeting with the county council for a date yet to be determined. We stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I have one. See if I understand this, so. The maintenance of effort would be forty-three, six sixty-four, oh twelve, right? That's what's.
On page sixty-one.
Right, okay, so I'm trying to.
Forty-three million, six sixty-four, that's right.
So if we only did maintenance of effort versus last year, which was forty-three, six oh five, it would just have been. Right, just a little bit more, right? So I'm, I'm getting to a point, so.
Yes.
The, the difference, so it's, we're asking for about five million more than maintenance of effort.
We're asking five million more than maintenance of effort, that's exactly correct.
Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure I understand that, and that everyone understands that, and I support that a hundred percent, but just wanted to make sure I understood the numbers, so.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Any other comments or discussion?
Oh, and I would add to that, if, that just, that doesn't even get us back to, what, two thousand seven levels? Is that what?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
I'd just like to, um, say that, um, I have no problem voting for this budget, and I appreciate the superintendent putting a vision together and giving us specific items that we can support and to deal with, uh, some of our biggest issues in our school system. And especially because of the number of at-risk youth that we have in this county. And I think pre-K, I think improving graduation rates is vitally important to improving our school system. And, and, and also, in addition to that, keeping the great teachers that we have and the employees that we have. And we see that on a, uh, weekly basis, um, by having individuals come in here and talk about what they've done. And we see, so the student leadership that comes in here, and that's a product of what that fine workforce has helped educate and train, and helped them to learn how to be the leaders that they are that we saw this evening. And, um, but, you know, I, I would not vote for a, um, a massive increase if there wasn't a vision and specific efforts to improve and deal with some of those concerns I think we all have had. And, um, and I'm, uh, very positive about this, and I look forward to, um, doing whatever I can to, uh, share with people, to ask me, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we asking for so much money? And I think it's a very, very good budget, appreciate everybody's work on that.
To piggyback on that, you know, in banking, we have a, a saying, match funding. And you can match the funds that we're asking for an increase to her vision points. And I think that goes along with what Bill's saying, so this makes perfect sense that we can justify this, that it's not a wish list or add to the general fund. It's, it's for specific items in Dr. Hanlon's vision to move the system forward. So again, I support this, it was a great effort you guys all put in. I mean, a lot of hours, a lot of thoughtful planning and budgeting, it really was.
It's, it's not throwing money at the problem.
Correct.
It's very targeted and specific that I'm convinced will create results in our community.
Absolutely.
And, and recently, based on conversations and meetings that I've attended and luncheons I've attended with other business people in the community, I think the business community is gonna be very, very supportive of this. And I think, uh, anything we can do to get them to, uh, assist us in, in getting this budget funded, um, I think they're, they're willing to try and help us with.
I agree. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point three is personnel matters, it's just for information, everybody's had the opportunity to look at that. We move to board members' report, and we'll start with Mr. Brown.
Okay, uh, just like to indicate that I did have an opportunity to attend the Merlin State Department of Education Gifted and Talent Celebration, and very pleased to know that we were the only county on the Lower Shore that had individuals that were, um, presented and were awarded, uh, outstanding certificates, and they were Laurie Bach, um, Mildred Johnson, Allison Sealer, both students and teachers, Laura Black, and Christie, uh, Kristen Briggs, it's, and Mildred Johnson. It's very pleasing that many of the other counties on the Western Shore have individuals there, but to know that we here on the Eastern Shore also have people that are doing great things in, uh, our schools, especially in the, in the area of talent and gifted. I was also able to attend the, um, uh, the awards night at, um, Bennett High School. And it's really, again, refreshing to see all the students, uh, receiving the awards and all the things that the schools are doing to kinda make them stand out as individuals. It's kinda different in each school, but that's good, because it shows diversity, and it shows that, uh, each school is looking at things differently, but also keeping the kids engaged and the students involved in things that are gonna help them down the road. Uh, and last, uh, I would like to, um, say that we had an opportunity on Monday to go over to the Judy Center, I had been there before some years ago. But again, we're real pleased to see the little ones, um, and the teachers there building that foundation, because those kids that we saw there, three and four-year-olds, they're gonna be ready when they go into kindergarten and pre-K and into kindergarten. So that is a good thing, and I think we had a couple of county council members there who saw that, and I think that's a plus factor, so they're gonna see that that Judy Center and the things that we're doing for, uh, younger kids, getting them prepared to come to school, it's gonna be very valuable to the school system.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
With your indulgence, I have, uh, two items I'd like to talk about. Uh, one in particular, and we've talked around it a little bit, and I wanna make sure that we don't, uh, let this get away, we move quickly on this, but the, the, uh, policy that we have related to political activities, I wanna make sure that as a board, we readdress that. I know, um, we have all received and looked at, uh, uh, policies that other counties have, have in place. Uh, ours restrict, have, we are limited to no political activities in any of our facilities. And I think there's probably, with a newly upcoming elected board, I think there's gonna be some really, um, there's gonna be some opportunities for PTAs and other, um, events to happen that may want to use our facilities, and I'd like to see, um, recommendation from either the policy committee with some guidance from our legal counsel and, um, board, uh, to address those issues and promote a, a possible, uh, change, or at least look at it again and make a decision whether we need a change or not. And I think we need to do it sooner than later, because the election will be sneaking up on us soon, and I think we'll get more and more requests for those activities. I don't know whether the, the proper way is to send this to the policy committee, um, or, um, I, I know there was, there was at least one, uh, county in particular that had, had something I thought was reasonable to me, and I like to look at, uh, at what they're doing, and maybe some other ones also with, obviously, the, um, legal counsel to kind of, uh, make sure we're doing things in a proper way. So I, I would like us to address that issue as soon as possible, and, um, the other thing I'd like to speak about briefly, hopefully, is, um, obviously, there was a lot of very raw emotions tonight, um, from the families, um, the Pittsville-Lillard's area. And, um, regardless of, um, of, of where, where things, how things happened, or why they feel that way, it's, it's a really, really raw situation. I, I would like to, um, see the staff in conjunction with perhaps the, uh, sheriff and maybe board members to have something specific in that community, whether it's in a, let's have a discussion about things, and if it meant as much to, um, to deferring some expenses to try and address their concerns about the need for an SRO in that facility, I would encourage the superintendent to consider that and, and do it as quickly as possible. But I just think, um, that's gonna continue to fester unless it's addressed very, very quickly. And I, I don't know what your timing plan is, but, um, you know, I think that's, um, I, I think it's related to, um, when something happens like that, it, probably many, many things were, it was fine up to that point, and now they have some really, uh, legitimate. fine up to that point, and now they have some really legitimate concerns. And I know in the umbrella of doing an audit and a safety review, I think that's really important, but maybe the sheriff's department can have somebody out there patrolling regularly. I don't know what the proper thing is to do, at least on a temporary basis until there is a more specific response that being given to the PTA and the parents and the, that are in that community. Because obviously, that's a, that's a very raw situation right now.
Mr. Palmer.
I also had the opportunity to visit the Judy Center and I had a ball. That place is just full of energy as soon as you walk in those classrooms with all those real short students. I can tell you, it is nothing but energy in motion. And what was really good about it, in each one of the classrooms, you had your teacher who was instructing the majority of the class, and there were a couple of students who needed a little additional individual attention. And at the same time, it was going on with the rest of the class, the other two little students were pulled out and they were getting good, productive instruction. And the thing that I noticed the most is these kids, even though they're pre-kindergarten, they wanted to be there and they wanted to learn. And if they knew the answer, let me tell you, that hand was up there. They wanted to be called on. So, it was really a pleasure going down, visiting that group. It's a real positive thing. I also had the opportunity to go with Dr. Hanlon up to the legislative breakfast, and it was very nice having some one-on-one time with our superintendent. I hope I even showed her a quick way to leave the government office buildings and get to the Bay Bridge without going out on those highways and through Annapolis there. So, it might work out pretty good for her. But a lot of the events we go to, we are constantly asking our county officials to go, county executive, the county councilman, and they have been real responsive in doing that. And that's very important. It used to be in this county, everybody was at loggerheads with one another. When you're at loggerheads with one another, you're not moving forward. I feel right now we're building good relationships and I think we are moving forward. We got excellent people in place and I have nothing but positive images of Wycomico County Board of Education and the county itself because we're the first thing people look at. That's it, Doc.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer.
Okay. As we come down near the end of the line, some things become repetitive. So, I kind of ditto everything that everyone has said prior to me. I would like to say, as always, the student reports that are shared, I always enjoy and hearing things, but particularly tonight, the one thing that I kept hearing was about the safety and their concerns and the plans. And I think that's important as we embark on not just tomorrow, but our future in safety. Also, I know it does take everyone involvement as far as all of our students and learning the extra mile. Mr. Butler, I appreciate all their work in doing that, and they are certainly well-deserving of all those awards and the things that was read and shared about them is important. Our grants, Ms. Jones, I can't thank you enough. I can't see her right now, but I, she has done an outstanding job in helping us with the grants this year and things that have helped our students have and been able to encounter that possibly would not be able to all have at the same time. And finally, I feel very good about this budget going forward, and I feel that it is a need. It implements our preschool program and a vision, and I thank you, Dr. Hanlon, and all the boards, and particularly all of you out there at the board and in all our schools making all this come together. And that's what it takes. I have a great concern of safety, and I respect all the parents that I heard tonight and agree with that. And we are moving forward on that. And I heard Mr. Turner say it earlier, I think we need to maybe step that up a little bit more, not maybe we need to. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Thank you. So, it's been a busy month. I went to the Bennett Awards, the Awards at Bennett High School as well as some of my colleagues. It's always heartwarming to see teachers, students get awards, and they're very appreciative of that. I went to Pinehurst and read a Dr. Seuss book one Friday. And not being a teacher by trade, I made the mistake of, before I started reading the book, it was third graders. I asked them if they had any questions. So, they had a lot of questions like, what do you do? Why are you here? Did you graduate school? Did you go to Pinehurst? And the teacher had to cut them off. But that's the best part of this job, if you call it a job, is visiting the schools. And then we had questions and answers afterwards. It was the highlight of my day, I can tell you that. Other things, I'm president of Wycomico Habitat, so I've attended the Chefs for Habitat and a home dedication last Saturday on Martin Street, which is also very heartwarming. And then I went to the Judy Center on Monday. But it leads me to a quote that a civic leader in this city used to say, "We cannot have a better life without improving our community. Our particular duty is to do those things we are capable of doing." And that, I think that quote ties together everything that we saw tonight and everything we do. We have to improve the community, and the way we do that is through improving our public school system, which is what all of us try to do every single day. And the parents that were here, we're also trying to do that same thing. So, if we all team up and the student reps, I don't want to leave those folks out because their leadership is what's going to really guide us through all of this. So, if all those boots are on the ground with the one goal to improve the schools, which improves our community, I'm like Mr. Palmer, my vision is clear and positive for the future of Wycomico Public Schools.
Thank you. You took everything I was going to say.
That's what happens when you're last.
Before, you know, sitting in this chair, you know, you get to go around, I was also at the Judy Center, or well, and it, you know, it's been many years since I was in that facility, and it's just amazing what these teachers are doing. We had Teacher of the Year in there teaching and did an awesome job. But as I said here tonight, there's a young lady in this room who is a graduate of our school system. She's also sitting over there as a reporter for WBOC, and it's an honor. It says what we are about. She's a product of our system. And, you know, I just want to, Brooke is glad to have you with us tonight. That's what it's all about, to see our students to succeed and do what they want to do. And as we go forward, we're going to take care of these issues because the students are number one. If there's something out there we can do, we're going to do it. And we can do what Mr. Turner talked about, and it can happen tomorrow with a phone call to Mike Lewis. So, you know, we hate to see all of this, but it just happens to be the society we live in today. It's not just here. It's all over this country. It starts at home, ladies and gentlemen. We don't have as much of that as we used to when I was growing up. So, again, thank you, colleagues. I'll be on, out for a couple of months, but I'll be watching you, Mr. Butler.
Texting Jane.
And texting, yep. Thank you. And this will conclude the meeting. Agreed. Thank you.